Yeah.
You did the springs and or seeds.
Alright. Thanks.
What language? Would you like to say?
English.
If I may. The condition could be uh. A subject to identification that uh. Reputed springs and seeds that may. Uh occurs on site. You. Showing on subdivision plan and associated. Like plan. Prior.
With any required changes, you would change the driveway?
Yeah, if there's only coverage, the fact that we gotta change that we can't impact it, so that basically.
So, once we find them, then it's the dominoes, okay, have to be put up there, okay?
I think we should also set a time period, I know that you're not, I mean. We should say that. The can, like, you can't just have an open-ended conditional approval, you know, that we need to have, like, say, three months or within.
Well, before the next.
It's not, it, because you have a push to wanna do this. It would be reasonable for the next meeting.
Alright.
So, I think it should be in writing, that it's, that it's on the condition of that.
It's gonna be the next meeting, I would ask you that, this picture, I would say, me, I would ask to add the, we're dying with technical. So, within the next, that's what.
Next week.
Days or so, next week, so if we had time to get the survey out there and all that, I appreciate sixty days. Oh, see, I'm the same, I was saying with word that.
I mean, I don't, I don't think sixty days would be a problem, because it, it's a conditional approval, so it's not like you'd have to come back, but like. You, you would just have to show that it's not on there.
Other than the clock start after we approve it for the, on the filing.
Till like the addition is ended.
Don't be signing anything now. Yeah, but now. Not good.
Maybe sixty days on the ramble, Jim, okay?
Probably my practice was on day on Tuesday at nine.
Okay. Well, you, we're just like, right, so you go to go take or something, okay, yeah. I, we are.
The applicant shall locate all springs. Seeds and other.
Wetlands, I'd say, I guess, they're.
Any weapons that are associated with that spring order and we walk the site, it's pretty, so, and they got eggs or bright things, so that that's, it's like, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're honored to be able to make things to get the elevation. I just say, I mean, uh, I mean, my preference would be seeds, that's where it's.
Okay, we have wording.
This is springton seats, that's what, like, in our zoning springs.
Because they have the.
Yeah.
They're pretty well mapped on here. A hundred and fifty foot as well now.
So, you're comfortable to.
Springs, yeah.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and we have a motion.
Think about that, too, if you threw that out, it's like. You threw that right off me.
Motion.
Oh, sorry, uh, motion for conditional. Approval.
Of the.
Of, of the subdivision flats. Um. Pending. The conditions that we just outlined.
Within sixty days.
Within sixty days, yeah.
At tonight's meeting.
And that will achieve as. Making these site visits with board members present, board members, myself, Jordan. And I say, if you don't leave me there, then I don't mean to be there, if you shoot an email to promote you be there and then make sure.
Yeah, we'll send it to everybody, whoever's available, wants to do it.
Okay, you'll coordinate that, Jay.
I know the public chair is closed, but can I just ask a question? So. As I understand it. There's no farmhouse on property.
There is, there's an existing. The last day is not on the.
What you planned to have. He said, no.
I'd be, I'd be living there, but I didn't have to be on. I live there.
But if you're to, not when there would be. The service for sun for, for housing. That'd be a possibility.
No. I don't like speaking your life, but I have to say that there, there is not, there's not really any value that you. To probably try and save that house plus. Because of things for what you'd like to do there.
Sure. Housing crisis.
Yeah. Right, and tear down another house. Could be an accessory structure. We allow that.
In the front yard.
Sure. We'll make a, we'll make an allowance.
Heritage steps.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it, the mountain lot just went up, that's a gatehouse.
Working on, trying to find a car. All was possible, so you can take me out and turn it down.
Could it be moved? Could it be moved?
Yeah.
You need a place to put it, that's the problem.
I know, but they move houses all the time, old houses. I mean.
Honestly, it's in the best location as far as.
Can move it.
Of, of the view, though, it's, it's low in the, it's not on the hillside.
Yeah.
The old houses. You know. It's.
Well, that's the.
Well, it's the. There's a lot of movement, they know.
Yeah, dismantle it and bring it.
Yeah, the community is really suffering here with portable housing.
Well, it's not a condition of approval that it may be abolished.
No, we know that.
The new owner may decide different.
Right, so that's why I say to communicate that for us.
Thank you.
So. We have the wording. Um, so, would you like to read us the condition?
Within sixty days, the applicant shall work the. All springs and seeds on the property.
And. Um, add on to the. To the subdivision.
And what?
Yeah.
Subdivision plan and.
Is that actually the platte, or that's the?
This is the damn platte.
This is. Yeah, what's the proper, this is sheet A?
As we said, both.
Both, okay. Alright, just wanna be clear.
The plats.
Plat gets filed with the county, right? Okay. We need to read it again?
We have a motion, we're good.
I made the motion to someone, I second, I second it.
Okay, all in favor of approving the four-lit subdivision? All in favor? Alright, alright, it's unanimous, and he knows. You're approved, subject to the condition.
Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, the last part of our meeting tonight is a discussion. You wanna pass these around, these are the.
Sure, one, I think.
Hey, you wanna come up closer? I mean, you guys.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Another one for Ed, or do you share?
Yeah, I mean. Alright, these are three. Site plans that we've previously approved that. Things have changed and we're trying to decide on how to deal with them. Um, that's why I asked George to be here for his advice and Ed for your input, obviously. Um, we did, and I think everybody knows that us to Danny Vallas was his site two weeks ago. And we walked or drove. To the top. And, um. James, the contractor. Gave us the tour. It was, um, it was very helpful and very accommodating. Um. Well, we have some situations out there, this project has been under construction for almost two years. The site isn't stabilized. Um. The inspection. Swift inspection. Walk has disappeared. And based on what the contractor states, there were no inspections ever done. The trailer has been removed. And he hasn't made any other request about the trailer, has he? Okay, alright, so the trailer's been removed, so. We're, we're, we're.
There is also. The, uh, contractor said that the plan was changed, that he was asked to put the driveway. Up further to, for the trailer. That it went up over here, um, so that's, that was, I don't, we don't know that, if it was. We were told by the contractor that. The owner asked him to change the driveway at the top and he did.
So, admittedly from the contractor and the owner, the job has been stopped for eighteen months or something, and we have an unstable site.
With a lot of erosion.
With a lot.
Towards the stream.
So. We. Did draft a letter. Um. And, you know, we would like some advice on how we should proceed with this from you gentlemen. Does, I mean.
They, they, they did have a stormwater plan, and erosion control.
Yes.
And. When you say there's significant erosion going on now, so unstable. Standpoint. Not.
No planting, no mulch, not anything, some of it's pure rock.
Down. Yeah.
So, basically scrub, yeah.
The, the driveway is eroded. Within the driveway.
Sure. The, the switchbacks are eroding, so it's coming down and going, shooting out the setback into the.
So, it sounds like we should document it. And. I mean, they're stopped currently, so they're not doing any.
It's stopped. The construction's stopped.
Construction stopped, but the erosion hasn't.
Right.
They can, yeah.
So.
So, if. There's a couple of things, one is, we, we should take a site visit, like, I'd like to take a site visit together, we could photograph the site, we could mark it better. Issue to the, you know, owner of the site, you know. Who directed to fix these things, you know, before you do anything else, don't dig a foundation, don't dig a set, you know what I mean?
Right, and you would.
What you're working on.
I believe he only has a driveway approval, Ed, right, he doesn't have a building permit.
Fix that, if, if they don't wanna fix it or, or address it. Then we would need to. Make a complaint to D C M. If you feel like you've already exhausted any goodwill with this person, you can go straight to the D C.
The issue is, and, and I think it should be part of the discussion, is that he, he ran out of funds.
Yeah, I know, but that's not here, there.
Right, but how can you force? Somebody to do that, I mean, maybe he's.
They undertook, I think, it's like.
Okay.
Buying a meal and then saying, well, I didn't realize that it was being turned, it was again afforded, I guess I don't have to pay for it.
But I ate it.
But I'm saying, so when you, and that's why I asked, do they actually have? Erosion control plan, did they go for that? That swift, which it sounds like they did, that.
Yes, basically, it exists.
That's the worst thing for them, because they actually have a permit.
This is.
D C has illegal mechanism, find them.
Looking at, right?
Right. So, like I said, if you wanted to be nice. You could go out and document what's going on and say, alright, this is what you need to fix. If, if, if you feel like they're not gonna listen to you. Right, or you've already tried this and it hadn't gotten you anywhere. Then the next thing is to go to the D C and just say. Here you go.
So, my understanding is that some people from the C A C spoke to. The E C people, like, there was letters and correspondence and stuff like that, um, I don't have any. Uh.
C C dot, some of them, you know. Yeah, Jamie Mount, I have a call in the morning, so, something you want me to bring up with Jamie, I.
Jamie. Pearson?
No.
No, Jamie. Oh, oh, the D E C, oh, okay, yeah. Um, so. I, yeah, I guess that's this, the. What happens because.
Jamie's gonna say, he's gonna say, hey, George, brother, I'll tell you to look at it, tell me.
Yeah, that's what I think. So, I mean, we did look at it, we have pictures, but if you need to go look at it, too, for yourself. Okay.
Is that okay with you, Ed, that you go together? So, we gotta try to bring it to a head, because it just, it's out on Route twenty-two in front of everybody, drive by, there's erosion. And we're, you know, we got egg on our face, basically.
I can, I can bring it up to Jamie in the morning, because like I said, I have a call on another project with him, and let me kind of help. Um, and then I'll just get his input right in there.
So.
Do you need the swift, or do we have a copy of the swift?
Just for your identification, I think he answered that I asked him, he was. Kind of the small project, like, what is? But just to go ahead, um, if the town, yeah. That's why it's a basis way.
So, the other thing that we were asking for in that letter was an updated survey.
Yeah, it's just a construction road, it's not a driveway yet, because it, it just. Doesn't comply with the drawings at all.
Joe, was there, did you have a question about the grade in some places?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's not. It's not graded to a ten percent slope, if you go up there, some places are steep.
Sure.
So.
And that's enforcement, I mean, that's definitely in our wheelhouse, so if, if, if it's built into code.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, it's a, it's a construction.
Or simply to say, on this day, it's gonna be at this level of completion, but. It's always good to make them aware, so everyone understands the town is looking. You know what I mean, so. This does need to be changed, this is not a driveway.
It's basically a construction road, it's not a driveway.
Right, well, either way, I mean, if you guys would go look at it and see.
But we'll see that.
See what is done, and then we can get the client the opportunity to fix it, or.
Scenarios where.
Yeah.
I've gone on sites as, as the design engineer.
Yeah.
And, and, and my line. Thinks he's done, I'm like, you're not done, you're gonna keep going, but that looks good now.
Yeah. So, the. The other issue is, is like, we're asking you to work on this project, but we don't.
That's.
How we pay his.
Minor issue.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
There's an escrow to get it.
Yes, at some point, we're gonna get a back, we're gonna get a bite at his apple, and we won't get.
Yeah.
But escrow, you know, can be established even for. These things, or through the building department, again, if that's. Um, we don't have assistance, um, because like, when I review the planning board, you collect escrow, building department can collect escrow. My understanding of this, he's going belly up, he's not that money.
I know, yeah.
My understanding of the end from. The building department, yeah, so obviously, escrow has to be the plan. Yeah, I'm gonna have to read that, usually there's a local law, if you guys don't have it, you should ask John to tweak it a little bit. Usually the way the law is written is that.
He's just reading.
Any, anybody, you know, any town. Or, or, you know, um. Agent, yeah, so where, force granted, you know, he has said to be, can collect escrow, in other, so the town should never have to put out funds. To support an applicant's project.
And.
Which is, they should always be paying. That's what they pay application fees.
Right.
And, and, and that's why.
So, so in reality, you. You can't do this work until we get. This money from Danny.
Well, I mean, I, I can, I can, I can. Do it, it's not invoiced at this point.
The town has funds to pay consultants, we've had that problem before that we've.
Alright, so part of this.
Yeah, it comes out of the general fund, and if we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed, I mean, we can't. We can't wait any longer.
It's not our fault.
Well, no, be, again, especially if it's an erosion issue, and that, and that's kinda where you get into, you know, I don't wanna say you get into sticky area, but. If, if, if the town officially is taking a position and saying that we think there's an environmental hazard via erosion. And then we're not gonna go look at it, we don't have escrow fund, we don't want it to pay, it's better if we just go look at it, take care of it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you kinda put yourself in a bad spot.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, I think that figuring out how to pay, I mean, it's really not up to us, we need to, we would need to talk to, like, John Lyons or something, uh. If we are failure, you know, if we are not paid, or if the town is not paid, how do we, how do they handle that? But we have to.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's a local law, but they can put it on the tax bill, and if there's a dangerous situation, like a fire, you gotta tear down.
Ways to deal with.
There's ways to deal, we're not talking about, uh.
I agree.
No, we're not talking about a. Brush fund, yeah.
Typically, what happens. The D C is severely. Which is why they don't come out to a lot of these things, so typically, when. Uh, this has happened in other towns that I worked for in the county, I mean, Malcolm, who's the representative in the D C, who, who is charged with this, he says. The words go, look at it. Send me pictures of your opinion.
Yeah.
And then he just doubles on it and says, yeah, you don't do what he said.
Great, okay.
He doesn't have to. Again, just connected him, come down. You know, lose half a day that really can't afford to lose.
So. One of the, so do you think that this would happen? Fairly soon? Okay, and then, one of the things that, um, we were wondering in the, um, about trying to get, if, if things can't get. Cleated, or the applicant isn't gonna work on it. Is there a temporary erosion protection that could be recommended? As a. Protection going into winter?
Yeah, we only got a couple of months left, the growing season, so.
Right.
When you let McJames, did he say he was gonna stop the project, was. Mr. Velazquez said that. Within the next month, they're gonna come in and continue.
Not unless he got somebody else, James said. James, uh.
Brothers.
Brothers Construction. He said he's years out from getting back to that job, he said he had a couple of days to spare, he has some machine that chops hay or straw. And he could mulch with it in a couple of days. He says there's seed and hay that it may germinate. But, you know. Yeah, I mean, even if you put winter.
I don't think it should.
Even if you put winter rye in it, maybe, but that's all he said he could afford for. A while, so, there was no getting back in there.
You can write a letter, and maybe you can understand in the letter. I'll point out that. Here's the violations that we see, there's probably numerous, they're ten thousand dollars a day. Choose, if you so, so you can afford to. Seed it, mulch it, or you can afford to pay these fines and seed it, mulch it anyway. Because they, they find you envy.
And that's the owner, not the contractor.
Yeah, that's the owner.
Well, they're both gonna get it. The, the contractor was supposed, you know, assuming they did it right. There's a certification in, in the stormwater plans, the contractor is supposed to sign before work starts.
Well, there's no book, it's gone.
That doesn't matter, I'm saying, the D C isn't willing to care, unless you want to produce that for.
Yeah.
Again, again, it did, and unfortunately, I've, I've gone through this. People seem to think that it's. Some sort of minor thing, and I can't impress it upon people, not you, not Jeff, because downstate, they enforce it heavily.
Yeah.
I just had to tell someone this today, because he actually said to me. What is the D C gonna do about? That's it, you realize that has your own police force, right? Guys drive rental, green cars, they have guns, mates. All they do is enforce the E C L, environmental conservation law, which this is a part, so. You know, of course, I'm more than happy. Uh, you know, have a biologist and, and, and an engineer from the D C call them up and say, guys, I got something I need you to help me with, we're going to anger. Uh, they love, because they can do a lot of this work, right?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about. Like he said, seven for. George to go out and. Do the site visit. Uh, maybe what we could do is. We could get the bill, and we should. Let the homeowner or the property owner. Know that this bill came in because of this. And that. That bill will have to be paid up. Before any other permits are issued on the property.
Exactly, we'll get another bite out of him, he's not, he's not gonna.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, the great idea.
Yeah.
Is, uh. Coming from the planning board, then, or is it, no, that, oh, so that, you said that's gonna.
Okay, so, the next one we have, and Ed, you've had an extensive. Discussion, I guess, with Sunny Bray. They've provided us with basically an ASBIL survey. Um. But it, they didn't require a swift when they got approved because their. Um, disturbance was under an acre, now they're exactly. Like, determined by the surveyor at one acre. But their site development. Is not finished, so. I, you know.
And they should. Have to get firm, that's the danger. From an applicant's standpoint, of, of. You know, and unfortunately, my favorite quote, when this happens, and they scream that you play stupid games, you win stupid prizes. We all knew this was very happened, when they sit in front of the board, and I go, oh, man, point nine, I don't need it, you need it.
Yeah.
Um, so now that it becomes aware that they need it. Stop.
No, it's not really that. So, if he disturbs one more square foot.
No.
Oh, at one acre.
Where New York State D C, zero point nine five. Fires burn.
Oh, okay.
And I was at a meeting with the head of stormworm with D C and an applicant's engineer who's arguing, and I said, no. He's at point nine six, and I said, no, you need, you need to do it. So, we had this meeting to see. Which one of us was crazy? And. Dave Gasper said, you guys are both engineers, you took a lot of math classes, right? You're gonna sit here and tell me zero point nine six doesn't round to one? He goes, when I took math, zero nine five rounded to one. I'm not moving, Dave, so.
Yeah, the other.
D C, you hit zero nine five. Swift.
Okay.
Because clearly, when you get done doing your, your disturbance. It's gonna be over the acre anyway.
Yeah, well, he, he hasn't finished his site development, this was an ASBIL survey of where they were. It doesn't show parking, doesn't show all the improvements, they attached three acres, there's no development, so. We're trying to get them to give us a final something.
But they, the way we handle it in other towns. Um, and only code enforcement really has the authority to do it, is to say, here's your cease and desist letter, stop. You know, violation. But we get that, it'd be similar to, you know, any other permit you don't have that you now need. If they decided they were gonna build a three-story, you know, wooden structure or something. As opposed to whatever the original, stop. You know what I mean, re-engineer the drawings, get me sprinklers, all the things you didn't need before, but now we did, you changed it. Stop. And get me everything, you don't get to keep going. Uh, so again, similar to that, you know, who knows how much more they're gonna disturb. Where their desires end, but at a certain point. They need more than this, this way. So, what are they doing, what are they impacting, and again, getting your own, oh, you know, there may be something that. Wasn't an issue before, and now, you know. Looking at, like I said, one of these springs or a seat that nobody knew who repaired it out, because they weren't anywhere near it. Now they're near it, who knows, so. Again, it's never a good idea. For an.
Well, they were, they were so far off an acre when they asked for the approval, and now they're, you know, they're right there. The other very strange thing, there was a letter from. Mike at the Health Department about the septic. And. I don't know if they handled this properly or not, they put in the tank, it's a pump system on a raised bed. I thought they always had to be engineered, there's some sort of letter from Mike saying, this is what you had to do. But.
You truly, they, I, I've never, I don't know, they could do whatever they want, but typically, they do not design. Pump system.
Well.
They say, you need to do this, go get an engineer to do it.
That's, well, that was our, our understanding, so we don't. We don't know if he's in compliance, he put in a tank and a pump chamber, he put in the fill. But I don't know if he put in the fields, I don't know if it's been engineered, so. There was a letter, but two years ago.
Okay, there's a requirement.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kind of a weird letter, it's not our typical.
I can follow up directly with Mike in the morning, because. I'm meeting with him and Jamie on.
Yeah, was the intention that for this to be engineered, if so, then we have to make them aware, so.
And I've said to the health department before, I really wish they would write those. They're very misleading and confusing.
Yeah, so, I mean.
You know, they think they have an approval.
I mean, this is, this is not far. I mean, this is, this is not far from the other projects, so I mean, when you're out.
Yeah, it's like that, you know, first Better Hills, you know, whatever, and they have a letter from the Health Department.
That was just dumb.
Well, the letter's not even correct, but they don't even have the legal jurisdiction to issue it. It's not their job to determine if toilets are required.
Yeah, and the question was, they, they initially showed those temporary party toilet things there. And we said, yeah, are they permissible for a permanent structure? That was the question we asked. Then the Health Department said, and he's not understanding or misremembering. But the question was that, are these permissible for, and they, you know, the the answer we got was, no, you don't need any, no. And and the last one.
What, you have a question? Uh, well, on this one too, there was an issue about a generator being in the setback.
Yeah, but he wrote, he he's got to update the site plan to show us his total improvements, because it's not, this is just an. Yeah, I know, he said he moved.
But it doesn't show where.
He gave a description of where he was.
I can't, I'm trying to. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I printed all these eleven by seventeen, so.
I just don't see that there's a concrete pattern.
Uh, it was, it was up here more, how the orig- that was that prior sketch they gave us.
Yeah, it was. Near the driveway.
And the, and the last one. I had discussed this with you, George, this, we gave them approval a year ago, this is on Hall Hill. And they since moved the house considerably, and they reduced the area disturbance. With the first approval, they had a SWIP approved. They then, we gave them a second approval with like a half acre disturbance. Well, they went in and disturbed an acre and a half. So, uh, uh, you know, they have a SWIP, it's in a different, I don't, just don't know if we need to make them go back and and.
Right, so if they have a SWIP, um, I don't know if they filed it. You know, so.
No, they, we have the paperwork, yeah.
So they filed it, so they have permit. So technically then, they're legally operating for D C rules, assuming they follow the SWIP. Are putting in steel fence, you know, any sediment traps they need, you know, stabilized construction entrance, vegetate the site, you're not allowed to leave it there. Uh, so if they're following everything that they need to, and they're not violating any town rules. You know, as far as instructing and setbacks or anything, if they're within their legal construction envelope. Then they're, they're probably okay.
That was the thing we, we need to get these projects to flag that area disturbance. It was, we did require that.
The SWIP is that you, you know, mark that out.
Yeah.
That's the only way the contractor is going to know.
Unless they.
Limited disturbance line on my drawing and and show boards right here, or here, but how does a guy on the excavator know where that really is?
Right.
You know, the surveyor needs to come back out.
Right.
Mark it, and they're supposed to.
Yeah, that one, they just completely ignored the approval and they tore up a whole bunch of, and I, I just can't figure out why. Hey, do you have any? Knowledge of why they did what they did?
I, I, I think that they said the erosion of that side hill on the left with a new silk fencing installed.
Yeah.
Um, that they were afraid without that silk fencing, that that hill was going to come down into the foundation. So they did that change, they put the.
They put a swell, yeah.
They said the swell and they put, they did put the silk fencing and the large rocks.
Okay.
So that was why they had to disturb anymore then.
And so they exceeded that.
They did seed it, okay, all right, okay, so they're, they're trying to do the right.
Yeah, I did see, yeah.
Part of the SWIP, you know, even the basis of erosion code plan is to identify the soils. And 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 that's something that, you know, if it's not in the town, it probably should, I bet you can ask for it anyways, you know. You don't need a law, but like, for instance, getting going back to the camp. When I looked at the soil map, because again, they're saying it's disturbing happening, they don't need a, a, you know. For the clean water act, you still need to do the exact same thing, you just don't need either permit. But when you look at the soil map and it tells you what your erodibility factors are, like I said, it goes from zero point oh two. Uh, like point six nine, they're at point four four and point five five. Yeah, you're highly erodible, you really want to take them back. Fifteen, twenty percent slope, that's highly erodible soils, with a pond and a highly, you know. I biological value wetland.
Yeah, and that thing just like drops down.
Plan doesn't do the site justice, it's a heavily wooded area.
Huge pines.
Yeah.
Huge pines.
Minimizing non-existent.
Right, you know, like, uh, there's a lot of trees here, and I mean, that's.
Yeah.
No, no, we can discuss this, but I mean, and if you look at Nan's review. When you start taking those trees out, you're gonna affect the acoustics, you're gonna affect so much of that area, and I'm.
Yeah, the other thing that I'm really curious about hearing that this is also used as a public. They rent.
If you go online for the camp, it 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 advertises family rental something or other.
That means it's open to the public, it's not just campers.
No, it was Tom, Tom, Tom. They hold weddings.
Open to the public, yeah. It's on, on the Copac side?
Doesn't matter, site plan or review though, so that's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, he's, the way he's talking about no bathrooms and all of this, because it's just campers, but.
Yeah.
It may not be just campers. But still, this place. It could be a change of use that we wouldn't know. Right.
But again, that wants to get fleshed out and and we can bring that all up, we have our designer meetings.
Yes.
To bring up and and, you know, yeah. I do get a little frustrated though, because like I said, I don't make these codes up, I have no.
No.
Knowledge above anybody else that does this for a living, Joe knows, I mean, six codes are written and they're written in English. Not playing silly games.
Yeah, well.
You know, it's life safety.
For you, they can read it as well as we can.
Yeah.
They didn't want to put any lights in the canopy, I sense, you, there's a code that says you have to provide, why don't you go look? Yeah, it's one foot candle at four feet, you gotta be able to see your feet in the dark, sorry.
Don't tripping down the stadium seat.
Right, you know, or we're not going to use it in the dark, well, that doesn't matter, that's not what the code says, the code says you're going to provide light, period.
Flashlights.
Until the flashlight goes dead.
Well, and then the other thing was, they show the, on the plan, that area disturbance about two feet.
Right.
You know, beyond the building, it's like, come on.
Without finding their area disturbance, or somehow magic resilience gets installed, doesn't serve anything.
Yeah, or that they can dig a foundation and not go outside of that, you know.
How they bring their construction equipment and they drop it in aerial.
Well, that would be cool, that would be cool.
And guys on excavators go wherever they want to go.
Especially when it's.
They don't make square terms.
So, the express is going to be a site, it's a.
Yeah, thank you.
It's probably a letter.
I think they should go, I think you should go by, it's around the corner, I think they should go by, just.
Go around the corner for what?
It's on twenty-two, this is on Carson, they.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not going like out of the way, I think they should visit those sites just to see.
Rainin' out there?
Oh, I think, I mean, I think according to George, they're doing the right thing, they're planting, I think, we just let them. I, yeah, I, I mean, that, yeah, they're planting, they put a second row of steel fencing up, they planted it. They have a SWIP, I mean, I think.
So is that swale permanent?
Probably, yeah, yeah, it's directing.
Goes down to the road and then down the hill toward the road.
Long as it's stable, it's just going to be runoff. I mean, I. If you want to go by.
Yeah, something to look at on that camp.
Absolutely, then, yeah, fifteen of them. Yeah.
They said find another site for that amplifier.
That's what I think too.
Very into that side, if they love it for some reason.
Over the water, but you know.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're all pipe slow drains, literally.
Yeah.
We're, we're not very inventive people, engineers.
Their package included a complete set of construction documents to build it. That's a majority of their sheets.
Yeah.
Not the site plan, I don't, we don't need to know what size the footings are and the columns are. No, I know, but that's what's in the package.
I, I think that maybe the, the designers didn't do their job because this guy's saying, no, we just.
We completed the job, here's the bill.
I would never submit that for that. Yeah.
Well, they, they have a local engineer, he wasn't here.
He's not here, no.
Yeah, lucky. Oh, he doesn't want anything to do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to address last month's meeting.
Okay.
I have a few concerns and I feel that I was a little dashed at that meeting as far as the zoning enforcement. So with that, um, I would like to say, first of all, good evening, and I want to say. That I'd like to address the board and the members with concerns, and after listening to the August third meeting. I'll start by saying that. The first complaint I received about Sunny Bay project is that they were not in compliance with. Uh, the resolution, uh, which was given to me and approved by the planning board. This was the first complaint that I received. After reviewing the level, the resolution. Uh, it stated, and I quote, the application needs to receive a building permit and the applicant. shall comply with the Department of Health requirements and you see Department of Health. Those were the only three items that were. At that time, the planning board insisted that I introduce a stop work. It was also stated that all attempts to contact someone. With that project, I'd call on death here, nothing about who's death here they come. That was a statement by you, Jim.
Okay.
After I received the complaint, I immediately contacted Jonathan from Firecraft Builders. He is the project manager and G six. Jonathan explained that no one had contacted them. I told him he needed to contact the planning board about their concern, and that the planning. Wanted to warn me that he could stop work. Jonathan then contacted the planning board and discussed what was at their, which is going to be. Jonathan submitted documents to the planning board, which the planning board felt were insufficient. As has happened, I guess, on a couple of occasions. The next letter I received from the planning board was put on my desk, which I received on August nineteenth. On August twenty-third, I met with Jonathan at the property and discussed the level while also making a visual observation of the site listed. I expressed the importance of these issues and that he be addressed and that they be addressed as soon as possible. On August third, Jonathan and I met at the property and discussed the remedies, and again, I made a visual observation within of the property. This is just eleven days from the original date, I received the letter from the planning board. The survey Jonathan submitted to me was forwarded to the planning board. This is not what I would call non-enforcement for not addressing the planning board's concern. This was accomplished beyond satisfactory timeframe. Second. Concern was about the McNally Lerner project or complaint on one thirty-six Hall Hill Road. The first complaint the building department received was the known silk fencing installed while excavating the ground. That very day, John was carried out of the site and the lower silk fencing was installed. On August fifth, I.
Please, and the full contents of that. Can you please state the data back? Complaint.
Uh, it was before, I don't have the date, but it was before August fifth. Because on August fifth, a complaint came into the building department about excess silk fencing. Which was installed on the left side of the house at the base of the building. And that complaint included concern of area disturbance, um, as well. The applicant. Um, was at a meeting I had with, uh, I'm sorry, uh, a complaint. Was, uh, given to me at a meeting I had with Phil Proctor at that time and was made by him. Immediately after August, I went to observe the property. While there, I immediately formed a reaffirm and expressed the complaint concerns. I suggested to her to call your partner and discuss changes in the excavation and silk fencing. She did so and told me to say that the edited silk fencing was okayed by Bill Proctor. And she also stated that they were going to resurvey the property for thorough disturbance. All of the information was done, and she stated to me that it was one point four acres disturbed. And that a SWIP was in place. I explained the significant of the SWIP and that signing and the keeping of those documents needed to be on site. She acknowledged it and a box is set up on site. I want you to understand that. In the August third meeting, when you folks were saying that I don't enforce things and I didn't find any stop work orders, I should be doing this and doing that. These are items that I'm taking care of as soon as possible, and I conceded the point. And I didn't appreciate what you folks were saying about that meeting on August third. Another complaint was about the Velazquez project, obviously, there were several complaints throughout the last eighteen months. Now, if you are aware, cyclists are scheduled in active place, unfortunately, I couldn't deliver that because I had previous engagement. During the seminar, George Smith, members of the planning board and myself realized that there were many items not being completed. During the review process, we learned quite a bit about the site plan review, SEEP and SWIP. All of these items, I have had very little experience with reviewing in the past, this has been a learning curve for all of us. After two S U P applications were returned to the building department, one day prior to the scheduled meeting.
So.
I'm in the middle of. Look, I would like to. After two S U P applications were returned to the building department, one day prior to the scheduled meeting when they were submitted. Twenty-eight days prior to this evidence update. They were being held to a standard that has not been practiced in my twenty-year tenure. As the bill, uh, with the building department. When I asked Joe Proctor about these applications, he said, I have no recollection of these applications. They were held on clerk for twenty-eight days and weren't discussed with the chairman. A simple decision of submitting, excuse me, a simple decision of submitting them through the S U P. As all others have been done, would have been a fair and reasonable solution for all involved. Afterwards, a discussion as to how future applications were to be handled could have been done. The decision of the clerk, a whole lot of them, and put them on a debt, it don't know as well the applicants were notified. Or not was unacceptable.
And so you were.
Mister Velazquez. Mister Velazquez stated a member of the board trespass on this property after he. Asked, as the board members asked for permission, prior to buildings and visiting the. Asked that the board members asked for permission prior to going and visiting the site. Unacceptable behavior. After watching the video of the planning board's August third meeting. It was obvious that the planning board members did not have all the facts with regards to the enforcement being done. The individuals that appear at the meet and responded with it because I have followed through. Was planning board complaint I received in a timely manner. Moving forward, there should be clear communication and cooperation between the planning board and the building department. To better serve the community. Thank you.
I agree, and I think that begins with honesty about that.
You know, I agree, I I think we're we're getting into a better position, I mean, I I apologize if you were insulted over anything that was discussed, I don't remember. Anything specific. And, you know, the way I think, I speak for myself and maybe the board also, you know, enforcement is important to what we do. And if we don't have enforcement, then what we do means nothing. And I I understand you're busy and I understand, um. You can't jump on everything, I think the la- the response over the last month has been tremendous. I think also we asked George to join in to assist in the process, um, to help. Everybody along get to the proper situation that we need to to to. To get to in order to prevent what's been going on in the past. So, you know, I think we've aired our grievances, hopefully, we can put this to bed.
I I think it's on, I think it's on all of us to improve the way we communicate and and how we.
Right, and if we're all on the same page and we're all moving in the same direction. For the benefit of the community, you know, I think, I think this was a well, um. Deserved meeting that, you know, you got to air your grievances, I think we have a better understanding of. You know, how we have to work together, um, all of you can work with George on some of these sites so we can. Cause I'm not an expert on site plan, nobody on the board, I think, is an expert, um, but we have to do what's right for the community.
I'm trying to, Joe, and I want you to know that I do everything in my power.
I know you do.
Try to answer the questions and kind of man, um, it really bothered me that. I felt as those members of the board last month did not have all the facts and did not know. How have the individuals moved from without coming to the board and what I've done? And and there was a lot to do with some way in a short period of time, and even though they're not in compliance with what your wishes are. I did bring them over and have them come here, and that's why Mr. Velazquez was here. And and the rear horn with, uh, the letter McNally, uh, thing that was handled. The same day, you know, within a couple of days.
No, you you were able to get movement on all of those applications, there's no question.
This is just a new part of what I do, I mean, there was like.
But. The frustration with Sunny Bray, and we did reach out to them directly, many times, going back to John Engram. As chairman to get their silt fence up, and he says it's always been up, but the neighbor said they just put it up, so. I don't know who's telling the truth. Anyway, um, I think we we gotta get past the past and go forward and, um. Hopefully, we can all, the planning department, the planning board and the building department can work closer together. When we have these issues.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else have?
I think Nan's, uh, her. Well, workload charts are gonna help us all too. So that we're.
If any board members.
More confident.
In regards to some of the alleged timelines that were laid out.
Well, it's all, you know.
Let's find like, putting two S and P permits on our desk. Day before the meeting, when you had them twenty eight days prior.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, let's not go backwards, let's try to go forward.
No, no, because acts are being missed. And they weren't on the desk for the first time on July. I made a mistake, I trusted that, you know. And I learned from it, and now.
Put everything behind us. Yeah, let's put it all behind us.
Yes.
We aired our differences.
It was that I didn't document. When I first put the application through the app. Honor about July seventh.
They were not on that desk, they're on the staff's desk, then we put on the day before the planning board. There were three people that witnessed, it's an hourly posting, you know.
Alright. Yeah, we can't, we, okay, let's move on, enough, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
And work together because our our concern, which doesn't go directly to you, is that we need to approve these plans and. Assume that the people are gonna abide by it, and often they don't. Then they get the idea that they don't need to, and this isn't directed at you, it's all of us, it's on all of us to like follow up and make sure. That people abide by what they say.
And there's nine of us and we drive around and we see stuff.
And they don't get the idea, oh, well, the planning board says this, but we'll just do whatever we want, but that's not okay. Anyways, and I'm not saying it's your fault, it's all of our, it's on all of us. And we can't stop people from doing, you know, people do what they do.
There's also.
There are loud actors, right?
In my experience of building sites and we, a lot of times we talk to the architects. And the excavators are not here. And they're not hearing the things, our concerns and our questions, and a lot of time that communication is not. Happening between the architect and the team on the site. And I know some architects who haven't even gone and looked to see, and they are the representative, and so they need to be following through also. Um, if they've made promises to this board and and.
Really important, I, you know, I I've been in construction my entire life, that's God. So it never became. Like light bulb didn't go off in my head, though I started representing towns because now I'm looking on the side of the table. Anything somebody says and promises or agrees to means to be.
Yes, that's what we're learning.
It's 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 so beneficial because the meeting minutes are valid, resolutions are valid, they're all fully enforceable. But especially in Plumbie County, the code enforcement officers are usually part-time and they don't have time to go sifting through the files.
Right.
And like you said, the contractor isn't here to hear the conversations.
Yeah.
So they have a set of documents, we say, hold up just like this, and they put behind the seat in the excavator, and they pull that once in a while, am I doing it right? Yep.
Yeah.
And then just keep going back to work.
Yeah.
So if it's on there, at least you got a fighting chance of them reading it and seeing it on site. But definitely what you have a chance of is, boom, sort of an accident, because when they go out there with the approved plan that's stamped. They can see a list of indictments right on. If you, oh, you do come for it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
Right there.
So, yeah, the other thing that we're learning is to request that they flag those limits of disturbance. So that it makes it easier for Ed to go out there and hopefully it's flagged accurately.
At least when it's done correctly, it's really hard to have a sequencing on it.
Okay.
So, so people see, okay, first everything's straight, your natural resources are identified. As to be protected, regardless of disturbance or marked out, this is before you can treat them, because had you known what treated the cutting. Yeah, well, which ones are valid or not as to be done.
Well, that's what we learned on the Velazquez project too. The other thing that that drawing that we were looking at for Velazquez, it doesn't say it was an erosion plan, it just says it was a driveway and septic plant.
Right.
Never said it was erosion.
And there was a, there was a silt fence shown, there is a swivel.
Standalone plan, I've not allowed you to show elements of it on a graded plan, and I can argue with somebody about that. But the erosion and sediment control plan needs to be its own plan.
Yeah.
Needs to have the type of erosion sediment control.
Yeah, that's.
Needs to have the standard notes, needs to have the sequencing, you know, I mean, it's a lot of information you don't need on there, but you have on other sheets, so. Stuff starts to get lost, you have too much on one piece of paper.
Yeah.
Right, so site plans are showing things, grading plans show things, utility plans show something different. Road sediment control plan standalone.
Yeah, and we, we never got that from the last kids, from Pat. It it was, I think it was just a driveway in the septic plan.
Well, he may have done it, I don't know, he may have not have given it to you.
Yeah.
Because it's a D C permit.
Oh, I see.
A lot of times. Have a different set of documents for septic too, that they give the health department, they give you guys an approval letter, you don't actually see the approved septic. Usually one of the things that I comment very heavily, we see it all the time in Plumbie County, say, hey, guys, give me the drawing today. I want.
That was done during COVID, it was a Zoom meeting, um, he was complaining, he had to cut the trees before April first, we had a snowstorm. You know, we went out of our way, the C A C tried to help him.
He trudged up there in snow.
And.
Well, you know, I have the same problem with all my projects, I mean, there's a back window when you're allowed to cut trees. And so you try to make sure everything is done and and you cut them, so you meet in that window. But that's on the applicant, the onus is on them and their design team, very complete. And get them in front of people and make sure they have them and not say, well, I, you know, well, I'm sorry, you didn't look at the link, bro, yes, whose fault that is, yours. None of us are harmed by that being a month or two months behind.
Yeah.
They're the ones with the money, you know, they're the ones with the project.
Yeah.
We get it done, guys, I follow up when it's my client.
What was the old saying, your poor planning is none.
Not hurts.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, yeah.
Planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part.
Exactly. This is just the preliminary, right?
This is, well, is that the map that you reviewed on August twenty second, twenty twenty?
So this is.
I've never seen.
I've never seen.
This is two thousand six.
Certainly not acceptable as a site.
But this is a new. This.
We know who wrote it.
Probably the owner.
So this is, what is this, I mean, I don't understand.
Yeah, so you're not really supposed to do that, but.
I've never seen.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, let's just.
Right, I guess, can we make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, make a motion to adjourn.
Second, go in favor.
Alright, so.
Till the next one. So everybody knows what we're doing. Oh, yeah, yes, 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 we can make it every month.
Yeah, I know.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it takes.
Yeah.